Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We're going to go ahead and get started. It's 6:30. We're going to call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. The quorum is present. We will proceed with the pledge of allegiance. Chief Kobe, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you, Chief. Ms. Hefford, do we have any sign for comments? Okay, perfect. We will proceed on consent agenda. Mr. Joyce?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Perfect. First, Mr. Joyce, second, Mr. May on favor. unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next up on new business presentation discussion on the reliability assessment report conducted by CPS Energy for the city of Castle Hills, including a discussion on the other CPS energy services offered to the city of Castle Hills. We have several representatives here with us tonight. In short, in some of the conversations with CPS, we asked them to look at some of the areas of the city of Castle Hills that have been experiencing a abnormal amount of outages. And during that time, they did several studies and Ms. Cox is here to tell us a little bit about that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for allowing us to be here today. As the mayor stated, we will have some internal subject matter experts from CPS Energy speak upon a reliability assessment report that was conducted from June of 2011 to 2021. And it kind of went through the entire assessment of your city to see why you were experiencing some outages. Before we begin, I wanted to make sure and also mention our disconnects that we have begun with CPS Energy. As many are aware, disconnects began in September 1st for our large commercial customers and will continue October 1st with our small to medium businesses and residential customers. Now, it's really important to mention that CPS Energy will not disconnect anybody as long as they make contact with us. Our customer service line is 210-353-2222, and a talented energy advisor is ready to discuss any kind of payment plan or arrangement program that we have available for them. So we highly encourage you to share this with your community and your areas. That way, we can ensure that we can take care of them. And I know that some of our colleagues, our customer response unit, Lisa Lopez, and our energy to business representative, Julia Martinez, who is here today, has been setting up a satellite office here in your city hall on a monthly basis. I think last month was their third one, and they will continue to do so to serve your community personally and provide a one-on-one interaction with any customer that has any questions or concerns regarding CPS Energy. Now, without further ado, I do want to present Christopher Garcia. He is our manager in our reliability department. Then you will hear from Sid or Sidro Bonilla. He is a manager in our vegetation department. And you will also hear virtually from Michael Gomez. He is an engineer in our reliability department. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Trevino and Councilman. My name is Christopher Garcia. I work for CPS Energy. As was previously mentioned, we're going to cover the reliability summary. I'm going to start with the overview of how my reliability engineer team looks at our system as a whole and how we come up with a plan to improve reliability. And also, we're going to talk details of what were the hardest hit areas for Castle Hills. And Sid Bonilla would wrap up and talk about kind of the action items and how we go about tree trimming. As I mentioned, Christopher Garcia, manager of reliability. Michael Gomez, who's remote, he's a reliability engineer with my team and Sid Bonilla, manager of vegetation management. So I want to start off with an overview of how we look at our system reliability here at CPS Energy. We have over 870,000 customers, 742 circuits. And what we look for is outage trends. We gain feedback from our customers on kind of reliability they're having. And with that information, we come up with a plan to look at several circuits throughout our system, do an inspection plan, and then with that inspection plan, come up with a work plan to improve reliability. Kind of taking a deeper dive and what reliability program is, are the main causes for outages typically where they're in trees and also built equipment. That accounts to about 66, 67% of the cost for outages for our system since it's primarily overhead systems. Through our inspection process, we have a team who's headed by Sid Bonilla. The inspectors will go drive the system and if necessary, take thermal scans. And we have also for those harder reach areas, drones that could give us a better look at our system. Once we receive that feedback from our inspectors, we look at a couple of different ways to improve reliability. We look at, as mentioned before, vegetation, and we also look at maintenance programs. So those are the main keys to for how we improve reliability. As I mentioned, that's over two-thirds of the outages come from those two categories. So with that being said, I'm going to hand it off to Michael Gomez, and he's going to take a deeper dive in the actual Castle Hills reliability summary, which will cover kind of the hardest hit areas and kind of what our action plans are. Michael?
Hey there. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, so as Melissa mentioned, we did a 12-month investigation from June 1st, 2020 to June 21st, 2021. And we found that there was 24 outages that occurred really over a 12-day span. That span was in the months of April, May, and June primarily. So in those outages, there was about 209 customers that experienced reoccurring outages out of the 1847 Castle Hills customers that we serve. And we also did notice that 21 out of the 24 outages that occurred in the Castle Hills area were actually due to thunderstorms or trees. There is a strong correlation with thunderstorm. Thunderstorms being in our area and causing trees to interfere with power lines, which leads to outages. And that's really kind of a safety function of the grid to ensure that we isolate that part of the circuit that was affected. And when that does happen, we do have to send linemen out to get out and restore power or whatnot. So it can take some time where that is concerned. So in addition, you know, we have had patrols in the Castle Hills area that have also confirmed that trees have been the main cause of the outages that Castle Hills has been experiencing. You know, so kind of going a little bit more in depth there with the areas that were hardest hit. Really kind of centered around a couple of locations off of Gladiola and Town View. Can we by chance hop to the next slide here? So as I mentioned, the hardest hit areas were off of Gladiola and Town View. This area serves about 227 residential customers. They actually had seven of really the worst outage of the 24 outages that occurred in the Castle Hills area. On average, these customers, you know, over the course of these seven outages, experienced about three and a half hours without power. So, you know, we, again, as I mentioned before, that was all due to primarily trees in that area. You know, and part of what Chris mentioned was again, that we do our inspection processes, and we have done so on the Castle Hills circuits. And we did notice that, you know, we've addressed all the maintenance in that area. There's one pending maintenance item that is, you know, to be addressed. And but most of all, moreover, is that we did see that there was a lot of tree encroachment into the power lines, especially here off of this area, Gladiola and Town View. And so, you know, the plan is really to trim this triangular area that you see kind of here in this, you know, reddish area here, and that should be benefiting, you know, 900 customers in this area that have really been impacted most of all. And so, you know, again, as I mentioned, the trees were the main challenge in this area. And, you know, that's our plan, kind of moving forward. And Sid's going to be able to kind of elaborate a little bit on that and, you know, kind of go from there. So I'm going to turn it over to Sid Bonilla.
Good evening, everyone. So on the next slide, this is our typical pole. On the very top is our primary. The next line below, this is our secondary distribution line. And then from the transformer to the house would be considered the residential service drop. We trim primary, transformer, and secondary. That's where all the tree encroachment causes a lot of the outages coming to play on that part of it where where we need, it's imperative that we get the clearances, especially on the primary. And, excuse me. So the types of tree trimming that we, the work we do is local development, emergency trimming, routine plant trimming for reliability, residential service drop where trimming is necessary. The typical trim, tree trim clearance distance is 10 feet, high voltage, eight foot from the neutral, which is the secondary distribution line. So when we do our trimming, unfortunately, where the trees located, we end up having to do a side pruning, slope pruning, V pruning, or crown reduction when necessary. Common tree applications for electric distribution lines, application depends on the clearance needs, species, and tree growth. CPS Energy works with its developers to minimize obstructions with existing trees. So on this slide right here, it says, I'm sorry, excuse me. Tree trimming will begin at the end of this. Well, I'm sorry. We're, the fortunate part, I was able to drive that area just south of 410, that triangular area. And I was able to verify a lot of its street side bucket accessible minus one section of its rear lot. The rear lot is where it's impacted most, where we're not getting the clearances we need. And so that puts us in situations where outages do occur. So it's imperative that, that's the reason why we strive to get the clearances that we need on it from the primary and the secondary. Excuse me, I'm sorry. A more detailed schedule, the street block addresses being worked first will be communicated closer to date. Contractors will place door hangers for the nearest to the tree trimming. So prior to any kind of work that we're going to do, we leave door hangers. We give that courtesy for the customer to give us a call if they have any concerns with the trees or any issues of that nature, whether it's dogs, fence lock gates, or what. This is our typical door hanger right here. We usually leave the door hanger one to three weeks prior to start of work. A number, phone numbers provided on the door hanger. A courtesy notification knock when the work starts or when we get on the property, whether it's street side or in the rear lot of the property. In closing, CPS Energy's vegetation management program is an integral part of increased reliability for our customers. We are committed to working with our customers to achieve this. Clearances are critical to maintain our system. We have qualified personnel contractors to ensure safety. And then we have the number right there, call 210-353-2222. And this is where the tree trimming, I've been in this department going on close to 20 years already. And a lot of the issues that we do occur is because we're not getting the clearances that we need. And this is where we need some kind of collaboration with y'all, allowing us to help us get the clearances we need. As in possibly a partnership with a brush pickup will allow us to expedite maybe us coming in and tree trimming and hopefully allowing us to work further outside 410 area as well. Because right now, we're scheduled to try to work that triangular part inside 410 within this, by this into this year. That should be it on my part, other than I appreciate y'all's time and hearing our program.
Perfect. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions for the CPS team? Mr. May?
I just want to get this straight. Are you telling me that there was an identified problem with clearing foliage before the ice event and you didn't have the opportunity to clear it? Or are you saying that in retrospect, you have determined that it was because of trees and shrubbery?
During the storm, there was all kinds of outages that occurred, whether it was equipment, trees, or it's hard to pinpoint a specific saying that this is what the cause was.
Mr. Paul or Ms. Cox?
Yeah, I'll expand on that a little bit. Thank you for your question, Alderman May. You know, Mayor Trevino did reach out to me early May, and he mentioned that he was interested in obtaining this reliability report, which is what our internal team members did. So this report is a 12-month span. It doesn't specifically focus on a certain event. And, you know, to Chris, Chris at Rose Point and our engineer, what we found is a lot of the outages, even during minor inclement weather event. And I know Ryan has reached out to me as well, especially in Town View. He would have a lot of those customers or residents call him and say, why do we have an outage? You know, it's a minor inclement weather. It's barely even sprinkling. So we decided to do this assessment for that. And so we did find that, yes, we do need to come in and clean up and do a lot of clearances in certain areas. But ultimately, our ask to you is to be an advocate for us in those communities. There are many times that we come in and customers do not either want to help us get into our right of way or they don't want us to get the clearance because to them, it just, you know, makes the tree not look aesthetically pleasing. And so we just ask that we need that support. In addition to that, we do annually conduct an assessment of all of our circuits to see which ones are priority and need that trimming. Throughout the year, emergencies do happen where we need to pivot and make changes, not to mention weather. But ultimately, for this specific area, we are happy to come in and expedite this process. But in speaking with Mayor Trevino, he did say there was an opportunity to partner with you and perhaps have y'all take care of the brush pickup, and that would help us come in and do that.
Yeah. And Mr. May, before I get to you, just to give some background on that. When I talk with Ms. Cox and we identify this area that's been highly impacted, it's unfortunate with CPS that it wouldn't be till the end of the year till they could get to it. And in my mind, that's unacceptable, specifically when we know that this area is highly problematic and that people are losing their electricity on a much more regular basis than it needs to be happening, specifically because we know where it's coming from. And that's when I said that I'd be happy to bring to council the ask of whatever it takes to make this happen faster. Just because if we know there's a problem, I want to make sure we're addressing it.
Mr. Ray? I just have a follow-up. The reason I ask the question is this. We have many residents that have very strong opinions. And I think after the ice storm, they really want their electricity to stay on. And so I want to know how we can help you help our residents. And so if there is ever an instance where we've got a citizen that is reluctant to even participate, well, then that's everyone's problem. Because if one grid goes down, it's going to be a whole street or several blocks. So I just want to put that out there. I think everyone on this council feels the same way.
Thank you, council member. Definitely. I agree with you. It's a team effort. And that's why we come to you to see what are the ways we can partner to ensure that we can do the good work that we do to ensure reliability to our circuit. Any other questions?
Mr. Gregory?
How do you view the partnership? What exactly are you talking about?
When we come into our communities such as the city of Castle Hills, and we have Sid and his team with the vegetation management come into your community and conduct the tree trimming, there are times that we have difficult customers that don't want to either let us in. I believe Sid mentioned sometimes they have a dog in the backyard that in order for us to get into that area where we need to conduct the work, we can't come in. So the ask here is if we could please partner with you, perhaps in your area, you could speak with this resident. You know, our service territory is with 31 suburban cities. And we absolutely love working with each and every one of the 31 suburban cities. But you know your residents much better than we do, and we appreciate that. And so when we come in, we just want to make sure that we can maybe lean into you. And if you know and you can speak to them that we're coming in, it would be helpful.
Is that the legal way, the only way you can, the only legal way you can get in their backyard is by them granting you oral or written permission?
We do, to my understanding, and I will defer to some of my team members, but we do have easements. So I mean, I know there that we have to come in, right? When you purchase your home, you've signed for it. So we must come in. But we do understand that some people have, you know, certain schedules with their work or even have a dog or an animal that they need to take care of. So we're trying to be as respectful as we can, and we're not just going to march in here. But I will let Chris, would you like to expand or Sid as far as not being able to talk to a customer? Just so we can get clarity on that.
Your question was on the access to some of these rear lot properties?
Do you have to have oral or written authority to go on the private property to do this clearing? I'm not talking about limbs that overlap a street or an alley. I'm talking about inside a backyard where you're going in and...
Yeah. So on the secondary from the pole to the meter, that's responsibility of the homeowner to do that tree trim. If we ask them to call in for a temporary disconnect on that part. Now, that section that we spoke of earlier on that triangle, those are all rear lot properties, meaning where the back part of the house has easement, and that's where the poles are located. So you definitely, that's where the door hanger comes into play. We leave the door hanger, we knock on the door, we let the customer know we're going to be here on this date to trim the trees. If they have any questions right then and there, then we try to help them out and answer those questions. If not, no answer, then we continue going on, and then we follow back up with it. And if we can't make contact, we get with our other department to help out on it, to make contact with the customer. But on the question on the legality part, I guess you'd say, I would have to give with the right of way from CPS downtown, CPS right of way to get that more clarification on your question.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyce?
I was intrigued by your diagram that showed the upper portions of trees are y'all's responsibility to trim, and then the lower portion, to put it simplistically, is the responsibility of the customer. Have y'all found that that's the most expeditious way to proceed? Because that's actually news to me. I didn't know I was responsible for that piece. And part B of that question is, wouldn't it be more expeditious for CPS just to trim the whole thing and not have to worry about coordinating with someone else? And I mean, you're there anyway. Your guys are there anyway.
So the part that you're speaking of, if we're talking from the pole to the house or to the meter, that would be the residential service drop, which meaning the customer is responsible for that part. And that's where we would call in for a temporary disconnect. Customer hires their own private tree trimmer, clears that part of it. Now, we're talking from pole to pole to pole, the very top line to the next secondary line, we trim that. Now, the very bottom line of the photo, I'm not sure if you're able to see, which is fiber optics, could be communications, AT&amp;T cable, we do not trim that. And there's a lot of times where a lot of customers have that expectation that we're there trimming that, but we don't, we don't trim that.
Well, that's my question. Wouldn't it be more expeditious for you? Just you're already there and...
With the resources, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, we're limited on resources right now, and that's more trimming than it's needed. We get a lot of negative feedback from the customer saying that we're cutting too much, and that's just our equipment. Yet alone if having to trim below the communication line would definitely cause an uproar because then they'll think that we're really overturning. So for the most part, we do our lines, which is the very top line and the secondary lines.
Thank you.
Mr. Joy, I'm sorry, Mr. Esbran.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say, confess in all honesty, that at the very least, I find this presentation to be remarkably disappointing. I think any resident of Castle Hills who thought we might have some insight tonight as to how our lives were disrupted for a long period of time have instead been presented a template presentation with one slide put in front of it that gives a couple of data points, but does nothing to even acknowledge the issue that we had in February here. And in fact, tells us that the longest outage that we've had here is three and a half hours. So those of us who went three and a half days without electricity, those of us who expected to at least hear something tonight about why it took so long to get our service back are instead presented with a completely different discussion. In my business, we call this block and bridge. You're asked one question, you answer with another. We're looking for some understanding tonight of what the service issue is here. Instead, it's been turned into a discussion about tree trimming. And I think it's really disappointing that the residents of this community haven't gotten any information tonight except for a template presentation on how you trim trees. And I think we deserve better. I think our residents deserve to understand where we were in line on getting our power restored, what those challenges were, none of which has been addressed here. Instead of a year-long snapshot in which you can average something to say your worst situation has been three and a half hours. Tell that to the senior citizens of this community that had no power, had no way to take care of their medical equipment, had no way to take care of their medicines. They at least deserve some acknowledgement tonight, which CPS has not given us. And as I said, at the very least, I find this to be disappointing, but I really find it to be remarkably dismissive of our concerns.
Mr. Esbran, I appreciate your concern, and I hear you. We, as CPS Energy employees, were customers as well. But tonight was talking about a reliability assessment report, which was requested by Mayor Trevino. So we weren't here necessarily speaking about winter storm Muri. If that's something that you would like on a future agenda item, we're happy to do so. But today, we were specifically speaking about this reliability assessment report and focusing on an area that your city manager had asked for us to look into because the customers or the residents in that area were concerned as to why they were experiencing outages during inclement weather. So we're not dismissing, you know, winter storm Muri. That is not the case here. We're just simply going through the requests of what Mayor wanted us to present today.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, but I don't know that that's the request that this council made when we talked about reliability. Certainly, we wanted to understand and have the data to be able to understand not yet just the most extreme situation of February, but what the problem is over a period of time. But that shouldn't have been exclusive of at least acknowledging or addressing the situation in February, which you chose not to do.
Again, councilmen, we're happy to. If we want to sit here and expand, we can. CPS Energy has already started to make improvements, and we're continually, continuously working on that. Again, I share your concern personally. Through winter storm Muri, we worked hard the entire six days, didn't sleep. I've got two little ones. So I can share with you that it was a very difficult time, not only for customers and residents, but even for us as employees. So we are doing everything we can. Again, I hope this was helpful. The reason why we were specifically talking about vegetation management and trimming programs is because that specific area that was presented to us of concern is one that we need to focus on for tree trimming.
Mr. Paul?
First of all, a concern that Mr. Esbran has, I agree with him 100%, First of all, a concern that Mr. Esbran has, I agree with him a hundred percent. But since you're here and prepared to discuss the other issue at the moment, I have, I will address a couple of questions on that. It would seem to me like being a public utility, and I'm not going to put our attorney on the spot. You have attorneys downtown in the legal department. I would think that you would have complete indemnification for the public good to whatever it needs to be done to go in there and trim, fix, whatever, whether the people want you to or not. Because like Councilman May said, that one person could affect a whole line behind him. And that's not exactly in the public interest. If there's anything this city can do to, yeah, I know you can't be running the city manager every time one person won't help. So there's got to be a process to do something. And whatever it is that we can help to facilitate that, I know Mr. Ryan and I know everybody in this city, council, whatever. We'll do that because everybody needs to be on the same track. And in speaking to how high you're going to trim or not trim, I got fiber put in behind my house. I didn't ask for it. I don't particularly want it, I don't use it, I don't care if it's there, I'm not going to worry about trimming around it. If I heard the gentleman correctly. The wires, of course, have to be trimmed, of course. And anything they need to do to come take care of it, just hang it and go do it. And but anyway, I've said enough, thank you.
Real quick, Mr. Gregory, actually, go ahead, please.
You see, you, things are underway to rectify the problems in the past. The obvious thing is, first of all, you all make hundreds of millions of dollars a year, except for the winter storm. Are you putting anything underground anywhere?
I don't have the specific statistics or that information for you now, Councilman Gregory.
But do you know of any residential area, in the whole area, any residential area? That instead, because that would solve all these, a lot of these things. My transformer goes out at least twice a year. If you put this underground, that would go a long way to the next storm we have, losing power for the whole block of the city because a tree fell on it. It would be underground and safe. Are you replacing anything right now, anywhere in the area, residentially with underground lines?
I don't have that answer to that question, but I'm happy to circle back once I find more information. What I can tell you, Councilman Gregory, is there are other challenges with going underground. I am not a subject matter expert, but of course, you know, as I've been with the utility, I've learned quite a bit. But there are other challenges, not everything is a hundred percent reliable. But we do what we can in order, in order to do that. Chris, would you want to expand on that?
Sure, hello, I wanted to expand on the discussion of overhead and underground. So our center construction for CPS Energy is overhead. And the primary reason is because it's very cost effective, it's easy to repair. So and the downside obviously is that it's, you're susceptible to weather. So there are programs that were currently undertaken to underground certain parts of our town. But you know, we're still have transmission lines that go to our substations that are still overhead. So yeah, there is a program to try to improve reliability in terms of undergrounding. The, so we're talking about, you know, millions of dollars to underground overhead infrastructure. So we're being very strategic of where, where it makes sense to our system to underground, both cost effective and also improve liability.
What does that mean?
That means that, you know, our standard, so our center construction is overhead and for areas where possibly overhead easements is challenging to get. They're considering underground as kind of the last resort because it's very costly.
I will mention, Councilman Gregory, that I do know some suburban cities that have an underground ordinance for new development. And so the developers are responsible for that cost. And to Christopher's point, as he mentioned, it is costly. We're happy to share the numbers to you, to the council, if you're interested with the differences. And maybe that'll add a little more context to what Chris was speaking on.
Well, I mean, underground lines have been around since God was a boy. And this could have been done throughout the city and the county years ago. And you would have amortized the costs in the books. It, I hear this answer every time, it's just too costly, it's just too costly. Well, you know, it's a, I think you have to, there's a way to, to work with that cost. And or else you have a whole slew of people at risk of life and limb because you'll never, ever, ever go underground. It's just sort of an obvious thing to do, that when you're flush with money, you should be able to do it to that degree that you have money available. And for years, you all have been making a lot of money. And now you have a little problem of getting back some money that you don't have. But I hope you all just don't continue to dismiss it as cost, it's not cost effective, except in certain very rare areas. Thank you.
Sure, we're happy to share more information on that to you.
Real quick, Council, I just wanted to clarify that the driving force behind this presentation was to identify some of the areas that have been going out with a higher frequency than normal, specifically the town view area. What I was a little bit concerned with though is Mr. Bonilla had identified the red triangle, which is essentially the lower half of Castle Hills. I was hoping that there was a smaller area that we could address that's that town view area that's been the most impacted. And in speaking of that directly, I would like to know, when could we get to the point where we can start addressing that? Knowing, I think I can speak for my council colleagues here, that you have our support to do whatever it takes to bring some stability to our city.
Great, yeah, so we've already started the internal process. Again, we, we spoke about the support that the city of Castle Hills is willing to do. That would require the brush pickup and the costs associated with that. So if you're open to that, we can talk further on that. And if we have an agreement and understanding, then we can move forward.
Yeah, I think if the CPS team could bring something forward and let us know what the ask is, that way we can identify that and make sure that we can financially handle it, I think that's the best way to go forward from here.
Sure, we can do that.
Perfect, any other questions, Council? Okay, Ms. Cox, thank you so much for your team being here this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, next up, we have six point two, public hearing on an application submitted by Mark Markowski for the Antonian Preparatory High School, CB five zero zero five A, block eight, lot one sixty four twenty five, West Avenue. Castle Hills, Texas, for the proposed construction of a new indoor activity center. It is seven oh eight, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing right now.
Good evening, my name is Charles Moy.
Mr. Moy, this is just for residents and then we'll have you present on the next agenda item.
I'm sorry, what?
We'll have you present on the next agenda item.
Okay.
Yeah, just give me one second, I don't think we have anybody else here to speak. Seven oh eight, we will close the public hearing and proceed on to item six point three. Discussion and possible action on an application presented or submitted by Mark Markowski for the Antonian Preparatory High School. CB five zero zero five A, block eight, lot one sixty four twenty five, West Avenue. Castle Hills, Texas, for the proposed construction of a new indoor activity center. I do, Mr. Rappley, do we have anybody from Architectural Review here?
No, Mayor, I think Mr. Chernus had to do the chair since Mr. Mittelman wasn't able to attend in person, but there was no one here. If there are specifics or questions to the project, Mr. Zamorone can speak to it as well.
Can you tell us what their opinion was?
Oh, they did, they moved forward five oh unanimously to approve the project to council and recommended approval.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Moy, if you'd like, you're more than happy to come up and present, Council, do we have any questions?
Good evening. My name is Charles Moy and I'm with Markowski and Associates Architects. At the ARC meeting, Mark was going to present the project, but then he was in close contact with somebody with COVID. And then three days later, he tested positive. Although he's negative now, he's still having some lingering effects. So I'm here again to answer any questions that I can on the project. But Antonio does want to build a approximately twenty four thousand four hundred square foot gymnasium on their property. It's going to be behind the main building that's visible from West Avenue. The new building will not be able to see it from West Avenue if you're heading south on West Avenue towards Loop four ten, because the main building is going to block it. Heading north on West Avenue from Loop four ten, you might catch a glimpse of it. Between the existing, I believe it's a church building there and the campus main building itself, because it's going to even sit behind that. The property there that the building is going to be sitting on is about fifteen feet lower level than the main campus of the building. Because the campus is on three levels, if you know the property, it's got the main campus, there's, excuse me, there's a lower level. Then there's a level down beyond the creek, which is the football field concession stand and new tennis courts. Now, new building is going to be built over the old tennis court slab. We're going to tear up the slab, but we're going to put a new foundation there. The square foot of the new building is not going to exceed the square footage of the old tennis court slab. So we're not adding any pervious cover to the, to the project. So the runoff from the building is going to be the same as if the tennis court was still there. The, the school hopes to have this building for, you know, since it has been a coed school for quite a few years. The girls portion of the, the school has been lagging in facilities because the school is built for all boys back in the, in the sixties. So that's kind of why we're moving, they're asking to move forward on this in order to facilitate facilities for the girls and then also to have a, you know, gymnasium that they for the, you know, for the project there, that they can increase the activities for the girls on the project, because they only have one main gym there on campus.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Council, do we have any questions? We have a motion. Mr. Joyce.
I'll move that we approve the application submitted by Mark Markowski for the Antonian Preparatory High School. And as otherwise stated in the agenda, item six point three.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Joyce, we have a second, I'm Mr. May, all in favor?
What, what was the, did you say that the vote was from the committee?
Unanimous.
Unanimous five oh, thank you, sir.
All in favor? Unanimous, unanimous, thank you so much. Appreciate the gender equity for the ladies at Antonian.
Thank you.
Next up, we have public hearing on the application submitted by Michael Leg for CB five seven seven eight, block lot seven, CHCB two twenty, Castle Hills Commercial UT two two six nine, Northwest Military Highway, Castle Hills, for the proposed exterior renovation of the existing commercial structure. It is seven thirteen, we will open the public hearing. We have anybody to speak? Okay, at seven thirteen, we will close the public hearing and proceed to item six point five. Discussion and possible action on an application submitted by Michael Leg for CB five seven seven eight, block lot seven. CHCB two twenty, Castle Hills Commercial UT two two six nine, Northwest Military Highway, Castle Hills, for the proposed exterior renovation of an existing commercial structure, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. The gentleman from Golden Chick was in attendance. Mr. Leg, he's not here currently. Obviously, this is the, the old jacket box that they're renovating to make it a golden chick. And Mr. Leg at that meeting presented the renderings and what it's going to look like. And ARC approved it five oh unanimously as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council? Mr. Esbran?
So, Mayor, I'll move approval of the application submitted by Michael Leg for the property as notated in the agenda.
Check.
Thank you, Mr. Esbran, we have a second, I'm Mr. Paul, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Council, for supporting some economic development in Castle Hills. Item six point six, presentation, discussion, and possible action on the fiscal year end, December thirty first, twenty twenty, annual financial report as prepared by Martinez Rosario and Company LLP. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, Council, Milo Martinez from the firm of Martinez, Rosario and Company are here to present the audit for ending in December twenty twenty. Mr. Martinez is going to go through portions of the audit with you and the findings of the reports. And just so you know, Councilman Gregory is our treasurer, met with Mr. Martinez yesterday to review and discuss the audit already. I have a handout that Mr. Martinez wants me to pass out, I'll do that right now, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, Milo Martinez and Martinez Rosario and Company. And what Ryan is handing out is my agenda presentation. And so there are three reports that I'm going to cover. One is the financial report, which is a large, thick report that you would have gotten. And then there's another one that we call the communication with those charged with governance, which is the city council is a governing board. And then there's the management letter. So the, and that's how they're listed out on the outline. So the first one is again, the opinion, we covered this, covered this yesterday with Mr. Gregory. And the main point of our audit is to issue our audit opinion and which that's in, on pages one through three. And it's a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion. And which is what you received last year, so again, it was in good shape. We did have a few adjustments, but again, the, the numbers were fairly stated with what you had been, what they've been operating with. So it's, it's a clean opinion, the opinion is found on page two at the very top of the the report. And just says, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities. The each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of December thirty one, twenty twenty. And the respective changes in financial position for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. This, so it encompasses the entire entity, all of the different operations. And there are multiple sets of financial statements in there that are required for an entity like the city. And, and so again, we've issued an opinion on all of those and it's a clean opinion. There are a couple of other paragraphs that follow up, which called other matters and it's required, talks about required supplementary information. And these are other schedules and information that are in there that some of them are unaudited and that's the standard that's followed every year and we follow that. But we've agreed the information, but there are certain pieces of it that we're not able to audit, we're not auditing it. But it deals with your, there's what's called a management discussion and analysis, where it analyzes the numbers for the prior year and the current year, and that's on pages four through eleven. And then there's the budgetary comparison schedule and I'll cover that a little shortly, it's on page fifty one. And then the schedule of changes in, in, you've got a pension that you've got for your employees that's part of a group, the state pension that's out there. And then there's also the, what's called post-employment liabilities. The one people are no longer employed here, they're entitled to some benefits and those, you've got some obligations there. So we looked at all that, but all that's taken care of by an actuary, they sent it in, we've checked it, made sure that what you submitted as your contributions to cover that, all that, we've audited all of those kinds of things in the, in the expenses. But some of that, some of those reports are based on some estimates, you have to be a specialist and we rely on their, their information. And so again, that's in here, but it's unaudited. But again, it's, the trends are good, we talked to Mr. Gregory yesterday. One of your biggest unfunded liabilities is your pension liability. And so you've got a certain amount that you've, based on all the different census and population of your member employees, approximately seventy some employees. They've got what's called a defined benefit, so you're guaranteeing they're going to get a certain amount of money at a certain age when they're no longer working for you. And so you're setting aside money and all the different cities are in the state are part of that plan. And so that there's an asset that you're putting in there, it gets invested. And you're, the whims and the subject of the market really impact that liability. So last year, your liability was much larger, this year it went down about a million dollars. Because the investments did really, really well. And so if you have some bad years, if you go the other way, at the end, you're about ninety one percent funded. So that's a good trend, that's a good place to be. If you're anything above eighty is considered. So that's a good trend. That's a good place to be. If you're anything above eighty is considered to be good. So you're in good shape there. And so again, that's that's some of the things that are that are in here in the report. There are other financial statements in here that deal with certain funds and and operations of the city. We've audited those and have issued an opinion, what's called an in relation to it, all matches up and agrees with the the main set of financial statements that you've got. And then there's some comparative amounts that are coming from last year's report. We put them in there. We haven't done any more work. Those were audited by other auditors and we just relied on that. So that covers the, again, the bulk of of my report as far as what our opinion intended. The responsibilities that we're taking and the things that we're issuing an opinion on. Uh, I think something that would be of interest to the council. Uh, and anything is fair game. If you're going to come back to a different schedule, we can look at it, but I think if you look at on page fifty one is the budget to actual schedule. And so on the larger board, if you can turn to that page. Is where you show the the general fund budget to actual, so shows where you wound up at the end of the year. From your original budget, then you had you amended the budget throughout the year. Finally, you had a final amended budget. They were unable to find that page fifty one. All right. And so the the first two columns are your budgeted amounts where you started originally last year when you when you adopted the budget. Then you made a budget amendments and that got just got us to the final. And then the actual is the third column. And that's that's what's been audited and then the actual word, the numbers actually wound up for the end of the year. So if you look at your total revenues, those were better by about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So that that helped you right there. You kept your expenses pretty much in check. The only number that's really, really much larger is your capital outlay. But that's driven by the the offering that you did that let you re reimburse the general fund for some. Expenditures from previous years of capital outlay and gave you more money. And so you and so you try, you're you're seeing a transfer come in for about three point one million dollars, about two thirds of the way down. And that's, so that's helping offset and and fund that capital outlet so you're able to do more construction and and work on the streets, et cetera. So at the end of the day, the change in fund balance, uh, about seven, seven eighths, almost at the very bottom, hundred and forty-two thousand three sixty-nine. So you wind up with a positive change, so it increased your fund balance. So again, that's where you want to be. And so I wanted to point that out that after all the. And last year's been a challenging year for everybody and it's still continuing on. You know, we're here. With having to wear the masks and things of that nature. And and so again, it's going to continue to be challenging. But you did get in there, one item that you got was some some Bear County monies to about two hundred thousand dollars and so. And then this year you've got, uh, coming up, it's going to get spread, I think, over a couple of years, Ryan, you mentioned it to me. One point one million dollars worth of federal monies that came through the. The the different acts that legislature passed, federal that came down. The last one was a big chunk for the cities. And so you're getting a part of that. To replace revenues and to also. Extra costs that you've had to incur for COVID, et cetera. So, but anyway, I make sure that I that I was able to highlight that for you so you could see that. That concludes my my presentation of this report. Be glad to cover any questions at this point that any council member might have.
Mr. Gregory. As treasurer, everything, any concerns you have?
Well, I'm usually considered the Grinch a lot of times, but I want to congratulate the council. For taking the time to try to understand something that puts most people to sleep. And the city manager, he took more time to try to make it work. This time is required every year to do this. Some councils do it, some councils don't. This council did, I think, an extraordinary good job in extraordinary times. We cleared up most of the problems that were listed last year, all but two.
Yeah, I'm I'm going to cover those in a little bit, just further down my my agenda.
And I just hope that fiscal prudence will continue to be the by the hallmark of this council. Thank you.
Mr. Paul.
Yes, I was going to ask, uh, bottom line exceptions, anything that stood out that. Without digging through all the paperwork, uh, exceptions that you felt were outside the boundaries, that's number one. Number two. Did you do any operational audit type or just pigeonhole numbers go here and they came correctly? Like operational, for example, is there anything in our system, uh, our accounting systems? Our automation are integrated or not integrated? Are there any recommendations that you've come up with?
Yes, sir, there are. If I could.
You go ahead.
Differ to to my latter part of the presentation, the part under management letter. Which is a small report. I'm going to address all of those, the ones that we came up for this year. And then I'm giving you a status of the comments from last year as, uh. Councilman Gregory was mentioning about what the things that had gotten cleared. But if I if I could, I could let me run through the through the item B, which is a communication with those charged with governance. And this report is required by our standards and we can do it verbally or orally, or we can put it in writing. We like to put it in writing. And it goes over the responsibilities of the parties. Do you understand what we're doing and if there's any questions on what we covered and what we're doing here? So we're following the US generally accepted auditing standards. And so we've we've done that and and audited your numbers. And if there's any kind of control problems with the financial controls or whatever, here's where we would. We capture them and then depending on the severity, it would go here or we would have them in an in the the management letter. So again, there were none that came up like that. There are certainly areas that we're going to recommend that we think can be strengthened and that'll be covered in a little bit. The, uh, we've also looked at, as I mentioned earlier, at those schedules on your your management discussion and analysis, your. The general fund comparison, budget to actual, and then the other items that deal with your liabilities for. Pensions and for the other post employment benefits. So again, all of that, we was part of our, we work with all of that. The financials are management and and the council's responsibility, our responsibility back to you is to audit those. And follow the standards and apply them. And so that's what we've done there. The the plan, scope and timing of it. We got started sometime in in May, uh, then did the bulk of the work in June and and early July when we finished up and then. We had a few challenges because you've got a person that was working with you, uh, unfortunately got very ill with COVID and it was. They drug it out a little bit to get finished, but again, with everything else, we were given full access to everything that we needed and all our inquiries were were taken care of. And. You know, we're looking in at your financial statements, if there's any material misstatements from errors, fraudulent financial reporting, misappropriation of assets. You know, or violations of any of your laws or regulations, and we found none of that. So again, all of that was fine. And so we. And I'm into the page three, the significant or the bullets that deal with significant audit. Matters and talks about qualitative aspects of your accounting practice. And here's where we look at your financial notes, your policies, your procedures, how you report financial items. We've looked at those, we found them to that they were in good shape. You're following all the authoritative guidance. There was nothing new or unusual that was there and there was not any any new standards that you had to adopt or who would disclose that. There are estimates in your numbers. We want to make sure that you're aware of that. There's the allowance for uncollectible accounts, which was basically allowance for any kind of receivables. In there, we look at your capital assets and how you're setting up to depreciate them. And so again, we found those to be in good shape, the lives that you're assigning. And then we looked that you're recording the net pension and the the OPEB or other post employment benefit liabilities. You know, in accordance with your policy and also with the the documents that you get from the actuaries, from the different plans. So all of that's there. Uh, we found the the estimates to be consistent from year to year. And the logic, we were able to audit that and we were comfortable with all of that in your financial statements. We had no difficulties. It's the first year, so there was some transition time and, uh. But everything, we got full cooperation. Everybody was very, very helpful. As far as corrected and uncorrected misstatements, which is basically any audit adjustments. We do, we have attached the audit adjustments to to here and there's probably about ten pages, but they're. The most of them are small, some rounding, some other things, others are some accruals that don't get, they get handled once a year, so we helped out with that. And you've got multiple funds. That's where our different sheets, each fund has a different one, but you've got multiple funds. So there wasn't anything there that to bring up to you to say, oh, there's a big problem or a red flag. It's just. It's very consistent with what we've seen in the past and what we see with governments. There were no disagreements. Everything was done in the normal course of of conducting our work. Any issues relating with financial reporting or other other types of matters. We'll be getting the, there's a management letter, representation letter, we'll be receiving. For the for the audit. And then there's the, there were no consultations with other independent accountants seeking a second opinion or any matters by management, so that doesn't exist. There are no audit findings or issues that would impact our retention or reappointment as your auditors. And then there are some other matters, as I mentioned earlier, where we did limited procedures, we didn't do a full scope audit and but it's pretty normal with that because they get. The the items, the nature of them, uh, which were those schedules on the on the the pension and 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 the management discussion and analysis type schedules. So those were were again, were fine. And then once you accept that this becomes a public document and for any any of your. Users, funding sources, et cetera, regulatory bodies. And it's generally you posted on the on your online, so all your citizens can see what's there. So that covers that part. Now we get into the management letter, which is broken up into two components there. And that's the smaller document. And the first part that we've got is the current year comments. Those are the ones that we generated this year. The first one deals with accounting personnel. And so, uh, we know you've been running shorthanded, you're trying to fill that position. Uh, and and there's a response in here by, uh, the management and and the city manager. As to the stat, you know, where are we and why is this still an issue or an item and how is it going to get solved? So I know that that's that's what's going on there. Uh, so we've got a response. But the sooner you get it filled, it certainly would help. Cause it just strengthens what's going on with your operations, with your controls and. And to make sure that all the the records stay up to date and in good shape.
Mr. Martinez, can I ask you a quick question? You you see a lot of other cities in the financial director position. Is there anything? The any advice you can give us to help us fill this position a little faster?
I I'm going to tell you the thing you probably don't want to hear, but it's you probably need to raise your budget for it because it's just, it's very competitive. The market has moved in the last few years. And I think your your the position is running about the mid seventies, which you're offering and it's probably moved about twenty thousand dollars on you. And so it's like, it just is what it is. It's just, it's challenging. I see it and I'm hiring people, employees. I mean, my my rates are going up and as far as what I'm having to pay to keep people and attract them. And and it's same thing here. And right now there seems to be a real, I mean, as a whole, in in the financial, we've had shortages. In my CPA business for a long time, and so we're always challenging with that. Seems like it's gotten to other industries and cities that we're seeing where a lot of them are struggling or they have. People that are retiring and so there's just a vacuum. There's just nobody there to to pick it up and, uh, but it's just very competitive. The 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 salaries that you have to pay and it's it, uh, you look at it, it's just a lot of money. But if you look at the surveys and the the salary information and guidance is out there. You just got to move it up and and I think spend some more money on that, uh, because it's, uh, it's challenging. And everybody's fighting over a limited amount of people that are there. And so that's that's the the situation that we're seeing. It's just, it's just really, it's it's a challenge. And particularly the smaller cities, because the bigger ones can, you know, well, we're going to give you more retirement match and whatnot. I mean, it's. The city did like a three to one and it's like, it's crazy. And so it's, but they can get away with it. They're big. You guys can't do those kinds of batches and all of those kinds of things. And so. It it's just that, it's just that kind of game. It's just a number game right now and it's just nuts. It's not favorable to the employer. It's certainly an employee market. And then, you know, with the COVID, you got a lot of people don't want to come back to work and they wanted to be more remote and it's just, it's it's a challenge. And it's not going to, it it's just going to take some time to shake out.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're quite welcome. On the payroll process, right now it's it. We believe that it, I mean, parts of it are 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 very manual driven. It's not as automated and it's not integrated. That's where you had mentioned earlier, Councilman Paul, about the integration. Well, that's one big area. That that I think you could would save, uh, would would give efficiencies and effectiveness and to use that. Because payroll can be a real bear or even decide if, you know, if you look to entertain that would be to take outsource it. But it it's just, it's very labor intensive process. And you make a little mistake and it correcting it can be, you know, a nightmare. It's difficult. It's like. You know, CPAs used to do a lot of payroll work. We don't anymore. It's just, we don't, we don't, can't make any money because it's just, it the the big companies. Have it so fine tuned and they're not worried about the biz, the businesses that you're going to charge you to do it. They want your money because they get the money deposited early and they get to invest it, the big payroll company. That's where they they make their money. But anyway, I know that that you hear, uh, Ryan mentioned that they're looking at at implementing a module to try to get. More of that electronic so that because even the time sheets right now are still. Uh, on manual and that, so you do some of those kinds of investments that that certainly would help. And the software you've got has, you can buy the modules to add on. So. And I think that would help integrate things more. So that's that's again, what we're bringing up, but we think that would be a a solution.
Would you say that our our accounting, the module is problematic?
Would I say that is the module problematic?
Right, the current, the current one assist.
The the. We do enough cities that we we've seen that the 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 soft, people are using a similar software. Across the board that winds up in the general ledger. They, some may not use all the different modules, but it's it's a good enough platform. It'll do what you need. Uh, and it's it's quite prevalent out there, the the software that you've got.
I think the ma- the mayor is also alluding to the financial software not being integrated, which I know you'll touch on later.
Right. I mean, that's the thing, the integration, because you wind up having to do double work because you create the entry, then you got to. Put it in the system where if it were integrated, you enter the data, you create the report, you run payroll and it would post into your general ledger. Well, right now, create it, run the reports, then you got to make another entry and put it in the ledger. So you allow for more possibility of errors, uh, that could occur from just transposing numbers or things of that nature. But it's just, the the integration is just is key. And I know it's an expensive part, it really is, but it's just, it's hard to, I mean, what we have to spend on our end, we just can't compete without doing it. And just have to do it in the long run because it labor just chews you up, you know, and again, finding enough employees, enough people. And and particularly in today's environment, it's it's a real challenge to do that. So anything that you can automate and simplify and make it more effective and everybody more efficient is certainly. Going to pay dividends just because you've got a better system, better controls and you're not spending so much time. On managing data on on in a manual environment and that just, it's, uh, it's tough because you multiply. You know, your seventy employees and and you go, you know, your pay period, each time you're paying payroll every two weeks and things of that nature. Some are salary and some are hourly. It just, it chews up a lot of of time and effort. And so the more you can integrate that and make it electronic, uh, it certainly helps. And then the capital assets, which, uh, basically the last, for quite some time, they've been kept in the records of the. The auditors. And so we've got a copy of that and we've updated it, but that's not where they should be. I mean, we can assist. We can, you know, they could, but it's really your records that need to get. Moved, housed and updated and maintained as part of the normal financial operations here at the city. And and again, you've passed a policy, just need to finish fully implementing it and taking over the the record keeping. And I think the target dates by the end of the fiscal year to get that lined up, the current fiscal year. So again, that will help a lot. Again, it's just part of the same integration process. That's all on the current year comments. On the prior year, I'm just going to mention which ones have cleared and the ones that haven't. Uh, some of them have a carryover to ours. Uh, a piece of it may carry over to what we're trying to, to communicate this year, but. The first, the first one from prior year dealt with capitalization policy. And that's been corrected and that deals with, with your fixed assets capturing it. If you're constructing something, capturing the, the cost correctly and then. Putting it on your books and depreciating it. So you're the, the, you have to have a policy of. What kinds of lives you're going to assign to it. So building maybe 25, 30 years. Whereas a piece of equipment, maybe five years and things of that nature. So again, that's been done. The fee schedule, that's been updated. And, uh, some of that, the, the laws and regulations drive some of that, others don't, but all of that's been updated. Collateral reports. So that's where you're managing your, uh, collateral that you have. For your deposits, you're, since you're a public agency, the law requires you to have collateral, uh, protection. Above and beyond a quarter million dollars at a particular. So. The banks come in and they give you the, the protection and say, okay, we've got a book of investments that's going to back this up. And with, uh, but where clients can get in difficulties is if there's somebody not checking it, that your balances don't exceed. The collateral. So, and it's been, it was a monitoring process and now we saw the controls from that much improved. And so those are working, working really well. The, uh, the cash deposits, again, there was a problem that. Because of the turnover and whatever in the prior year where those weren't getting done tim- timely and the money was being held. Too long. And so we saw where that got cleared up. And so that's, that's functioning, uh, appropriately. The, um. And the Public Funds Investment Act. Again, that dealt with a policy issue and because you're a government agency, the state has passed legislation where you have to have a certain. The, um, the way you manage your, your public funds and investment, they limit as to what you can do because. Otherwise they don't want people to get into something really, really risky. And, and yours is fairly conservative. That's not a problem. It's just. They want you to do certain things that you have a policy that you manage it, that you review it. And that the policy, once it's been set by council, then it's adhered to. So that's what. Uh, but if you don't set up a policy, then that you have to do. So anyway, that's been cleared up. So that's been corrected. The, um. The, the items that had not been cleared, the two that were remaining, one dealt with the, the Gatsby 68. And that's, that's, that one just deals with the recording of entries for the. For the pension plan. And so a lot of, uh, and the related disclosures. So a lot of clients have a challenge with that. So. Part of it could be cleared where you'd sit down, maybe do some training for your staff and help them through some of that. Uh, because it can be, uh, it can be overwhelming depending on the technical capabilities and, and the experience of your staff. Because it's, it's fairly high level stuff that you're dealing with. But it's not rocket science either, but it can be, we can set up, uh, give some guidance and help out there. And then the, uh, the accounting system, the integration, I think we've talked about the payroll, the fixed assets. So all of that, just making sure that, um, you get fully integrated, you get the, 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 the. Use of your module as best you can so that it, it's cuts down on the manual processes and that there's not any weaknesses in. Either reconciliation or oversight or anything that needs to be done to keep, uh, strong controls there. And, and right now, just, just the way your system functions. Where a lot of it's going through the courts and, and, and then that information that needs to get rekeyed in, it needs to. Some of the duties need to be centralized and, and re, uh, assigned and just the controls just revamped. But if the software will, will assist in that, that's where you're running into some of the difficulties.
And Mr. Martinez, this is what Ms. Frazier had, has the prior audit firm that did this, the same note to integrate your financial system previous years?
Yes.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation. Any questions on any item?
Counsel, do we have any questions from Mr. Martinez? We have, uh, we came, Mr. Joyce?
Just a quick question, please. Mr. Martinez, uh, thank you for your very detailed report. I just don't understand, I guess, the encode as it applies to payroll and how that. Interfaces with assist. How do those two connect? Or do they?
That right now they're not. I mean, you, you have to have another step in the process to. To, to get it into, into the financial reporting part or the general ledger. So if you, if you get the, the module that'll fully integrate, then once you do the, the, the payroll, you run it and all that, it would. Generate the entries to post into the accounting system. So right now you're having to do. Do it two times. You, you, you create a report, then from there you have to, uh, post it in there, create a journal entry to post into it. What you're wanting to do is just make it seamless where you, once you do it, obviously somebody would have to review the entry. Is it accurate? Or do reliable? But that's where you've got, one person produces it, the other person reviews it, and then it, it gets posted to the.
Okay. So once we have that in other encode module, encode will talk to assist.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Or if we had the encode financial system that spoke to both our courts and permitting. There is a module with that encode financial system that does payroll as well.
Yeah. If there's no further questions, counsel, do we have a motion? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt the annual financial report as prepared by Martinez, Rosario and Company, LLP.
We wish him a Mr. May, second, Mr. Gregory, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Mayor, I just want to say, uh, council members, again, thank you all for, uh, selecting our firm to work with you. It's been a pleasure. We hope to continue to do that and that you're happy with. What you need and, uh. Our phone lines are open. If you guys have any questions at any time, feel free to reach out.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, we're going to go ahead and move ahead six point 11 so that the gentleman from our district can make their way home. Discussion and possible action on an award for the 2021 street reconstruction projects for approximately 10 streets. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, mayor. Um, this is for the reconstruction of the 10 streets that we went out for bid. We got and received, uh, four bids and, um. Mr. Byron Sanford, Sanford, Tannifer, sorry Byron, is here to discuss the recommendation by them as our engineers on the award. Uh, and discuss anything related to any of those bids or the bid tabulation you might have. In the bid, there was a proposed, uh, base bid and then three alternates. And so it's, their engineering is recommendation in mind to do, um, all of those based on the lowest bid. Which allows us to do, uh, two extra streets that were add, uh, two and three, I believe. Correct, Byron?
Yeah. So we had actually four adults, but yes, um, two of the streets, lemon wood, the extension. And then also let it was added.
And, uh, the recommendation from, excuse me?
Roulette?
No, no, Roulette was the add alternate on there as well to see if. We could actually, depending on the bids, how they came in, if we were actually to, um, uh, allow to do that street. The, the recommendation, um, by our engineers is to RL Jones. We worked with them on the Antler project and, uh, I felt like they did a pretty good job on that project. But I'll turn it over to Byron here for any specific questions, uh, to the bids or the parts of the engineering or streets. Thank you.
And so we're making a recommendation.
I get you to pick the mic up a little bit, sir.
We're making a recommendation to award the base bid and the adults. For, uh, 1,967,548 and 50 cents. Like, uh, Ryan, I mentioned, uh, RL Jones has done work for the city. We've worked with them on other projects. With the city of San Antonio and Saul's, and we're comfortable with working with these, uh, this contractor.
Perfect. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions? Mr. Isbrand?
I, that mayor and council, I'd move approval of the recommendation of the city engineer and city manager on the base bid and adults.
Second.
Second, I missed for me, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel.
Mayor, real quick, since we do have a certain budget for the reconstruction of the streets. It's my goal to come back to council with our engineers to be able to do more streets. Which is leaves about a million dollars in there to do. Uh, but we'll come back with those recommendations at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, for, uh, knocking out 10 streets and hopefully about just over a year. That's amazing, which is typically taken about 10 years and historically. Next up, we have item 6.7, discussion impossible action by record vote on ordinance number. 2021 dash oh nine dash one four to adopt fiscal year 2022 operating budget for the city of Castle Hills. Mr. Rappley. Mayor, I think the PowerPoint is open up there. Let me just see if this is working. Okay. All right. All right, Mayor Council, thank you. Um, I just wanted to reiterate what I had mentioned during the. Start of this process when I delivered the proposed budget, but, uh, this is, uh, this has been a difficult budget process. Uh, in the past, I relied on, you know, our finance director for majority of the developments. Uh, again, we wish Ms. Vigans a speedy recovery. Uh, she's been instrumental in past previous budgets that we have done here with the city of Castle Hills. Um, I'd like to thank Ms. Nora Davis who stepped it up. She's been very instrumental. And helping me with the final developments of this budget process. Ms. Tedford for putting the nice PDF together and working with me the other day on it. And then, um, our leadership has been instrumental between Chief Zuniga, Mr. Harada, Chief Ludwig, Mr. Zamaron. That is our team here. Um, I can't do this alone. If I did. Probably wouldn't get any sleep, but I have to rely on these experts and they're very helpful to me on a daily basis and I applaud them for their work. Today I want to, tonight I want to be able to submit this for your adoption. We'll go through the, uh, PowerPoint. What I've done here is proposed FY22, which was a city manager budget. So on August 9th, when I delivered the proposed budget to you, it was, it was my budget. Once you receive it, it turns into the FY22 proposed council budget, uh, just like we've done every year. Originally, when I proposed it, it was 7,109,814, uh, didn't have a COLA, uh, included a 10% increase in health insurance. The unfunded projects at the time were the traffic enforcement officer certification pay for our fire department. Phase two renovations for the fire departments. And then the increase to the sanitation rate of a dollar 50 per month, uh, was built in. Moving forward, the increase of 327,506. This now includes a 2.5% COLA, includes an adjustment from 10 to 5%. In the health insurance based on the rerate that allowed us to program, reprogram 30,000 into the budget. Being the general fund, the infusion of the American Rescue Plan funds in the amount of 297,000. Includes a modification in hourly rate for our sanitation collectors position based, uh, from a base pay of 1446 to 1650. We increased the line item for right away abatement, maintenance to 10,000. And then I wanted to note that unfunded projects still serve as a traffic enforcement officer and the certification pay for our fire department. These are basically the highlights that I wanted to give to you for today's adoption. Here's a timeline how we got here. Obviously delivery of the budget. The notice was published. We had the hearing last week and then adoption for today. Through this slide here, I wanted to be able to cover about five general areas for us to focus on. One is personnel. This budget does not include any increases to any personnel to the budget. The budget is 7,406,814. And the expenses are 7,406,814 for expenses. Uh, and then of course the revenue is 7,406. Uh, face, excuse me, three capital expenses. We're able to put in phase two renovations in the fire department, include the city hall generator. And then the IT infrastructure improvements, uh, to help with our cybersecurity. And then, uh, cost of living adjustment to 2.5 has been programmed in. And then of course our capital projects, certificates of obligations, uh, street reconstruction, as we just approved the 3.3 million. And then Banning Carrollwood phase two, which is underway right now. Under Public Works, as I mentioned. We worked to, uh, as part of our survey, we looked at what other labor collectors base were paying and we kind of. Looked at what Alamo Heights was, and I think we came with about 1650. And, uh, again, this is where I would like to thank Ms. Davis because, uh, she was very helpful in helping me adjust the pay scale. And being able to incorporate this into the budget. This is the breakdown for starting pay currently 1446, year five, 1790. This now changes to 1650 and year five, 1994. And if the 2.5% COLA is increased, starting January 1st, 2022, that number is adjusted to about, um, I think 1675 or 1680. Based on that 2.5%. It increases the line item for traffic signs to move forward without fitting the new signs through the replacement program. Right now, when I delivered the budget to you, we had 4,000 in there. Um, I'm working with a contractor who's going to move forward with, um, the replacement of these signs. And, uh, so I moved up the adjustment to those signs based on that cost to try to outfit the rest of the Castle Hills. Neighborhoods with this new sign. And of course, we will be doing replacement as we go through with the capital projects. Last year, city council approved a 50 cent increase for a monthly rate of 2550. As I mentioned, I programmed in a dollar 50 increase, uh, to the FY22 budget. Uh, this does not include, as we discussed in previous workshops for money for roto tippers for the truck. But I believe we'll be able to do, do a bulk pickup for the residents. Hopefully leave once a year, maybe twice a year. Uh, I'm optimistic about that as well. FY 2021 adopted budget line item for landfill, uh, was 100 and 130,000. Sorry, that's an error. But it 140,000 in the proposed. And then the request of a F350 field, uh, utility truck. There's funds in the contingency fund to be able to take care of that request from Public Works. The American Rescue Plan, um, as I mentioned, um, we are going to receive 1.1, 1,106,000. As I mentioned to the last meeting, uh, we've already received the first payment of 553,000. As you see in the fund, in the budget, I've accounted for that as projected revenue in FY21. And then when we receive an FY22 as an incoming revenue. Um, and what we plan to do here is the transfer of 297,000, which leaves about 809, 810,000. For future use of those dollars for other projects or one-time capital purchases. And I believe chief, we have to use that by 25 or 26. I've got a consensus here, December 25. Correct? City attorney. Thank you. You might not recognize him. He's always on Zoom. So. You're wondering too, huh? Yeah. I, I did, did a double take. And just so I can break this down, um, there's categories in using these funds and revenue replacement is one of them. As I mentioned, previous meetings, we had Ms. Wallace, Vicky Wallace help, who was a financial consultant. She was able to do the GF A worksheet that basically puts in the numbers from 2019. There's a, there's a line column for 2020 and it shows what the revenue loss was. And it's based on certain revenue. We couldn't include court revenue. But it showed us losing about $73,000. So that's one component that goes and reimburses the general fund. The other portion is reimbursement salary benefits for first responders fire. And one of the things I chucked with Chief Ludwig about was there is dollars that you can reimburse salary benefits for our. And one of the things I chucked with Chief Ludwig about was there is dollars that you can reimburse salary benefits for our fighter fires related to COVID. We could actually reimburse up to, I believe, this past March, almost five or six months, which would take up majority of these funds, but what we decided to do is about twenty five percent of that to reimburse at sixty K for right now, uh, to put back in this process. Uh, the capital expenses one time, the city hall generator, which was approved by council. IT infrastructure cybersecurity improvements. At some point, I'll be bringing that to council for review and approval. And then the phase two renovations to the fire department that, and the utility shed that was requested by Chief Ludwig over in the fire department. Were able to use those dollars to expense that. Again, as I mentioned, proposed FY budget has programmed in the two hundred and ninety seven thousand transfer, which leaves a balance about eight oh nine for future use. And part of my goal is to have a future work session with council on the rest of those dollars to see how we want to go by, uh, utilizing those because, there's a couple of things I'm learning with Chief Ludwig is you can actually use some of the funds to improve your parks. Um, you can actually do bathrooms and canopies and shade shelters, um, for your parks. And then also you can use them for drainage projects. And so we have a few other drainage projects that we'd like to look at using these funds for, to offset that would come out of the drainage fund itself. Uh, if we have less coming out of the drainage fund, the easier it is to pay back our debt for future years. The cola, cost of living adjustment. We've talked about this over a few workshops. Last workshop, when we proposed the chart here, um, you know, I, I'm kind of just reading council on different numbers. And, you know, I felt like two point five was a good compromise on the cola at this time. Uh, I was recommending three for our employees, um, but I heard two, I heard three, but I felt like this was sort of a happy median right now. And again, as we were able to reimburse the general fund with that revenue loss, this takes up majority of a cola at two point five percent. What I also wanted you to know is just the difference from two point five to three percent is the eighteen thousand. Councilman Joyce asked me earlier today, um, when you look at the line item for salaries, it, and, and what I wanted to also see is, I gave you all the eleven by seventeen copy. So when you look at the council proposed column, the yellow changes are all the changes that have been done, uh, related to the cola. And those colas also impact salary, FICA, Medicare, TMRS and benefits. So you have to adjust accordingly, not just the salary line item at two point five. But I wanted you all to see what the difference was just on, uh, three, uh, eighteen thousand, just that three percent. Unfunded project expenses, again, traffic enforcement officer and then certification pay for our fire department at twenty four thousand. These two requests are not included in this proposed budget. Uh, the traffic enforcement officer, I spoke to Chief Zuniga about this and I think that we have a couple of other options we'd like to see before actually putting the position in. Right now, he's, uh, getting two new recruits, he's, he's down a couple right now. Um, so I think he's gonna be looking at trying to, um, modify how some of the patrol is done. And then we also want to look at maybe getting outside assistance, um, for enforcement on Northwest Military. And something I was gonna talk to Chief Zuniga about, which might, uh, might allow for, not necessarily impact the salary and benefits, but just doing contract work for enforcement on Northwest Military. But I think we'll bring that forward at a future meeting, uh, for council's review and, uh, discussion on those. But we know and Chief Zuniga recognizes that it is a problem for enforcement right now. And so we want to try to address it as quickly as possible. But, um, again, don't feel it's the time to put a traffic enforcement officer in this budget, so. Uh, certification pay, um, our fire department, our fire chief asked for this last year. Obviously, last year was a very tight budget. And I, as city manager, I would not have an issue, I'd recommend it. Right now, there's a couple of options if, if council wanted to incorporate this, we could, um, probably utilize a little more money out of the American Rescue Fund and, uh, put a different transfer on there to encompass this. Or just take that portion out of the fund balance to make sure we get this. Again, I think this is something that our fire department has been asking for. It helps us be competitive. Chief has lost now two firefighters recently to the same city. So I know we talked about the retirement, um, process and I don't think that's, um, feasible this year to do. However, it is something that we probably need to look at to stay competitive with other, uh, cities around the area. But, um, again, I would recommend to find a way to, uh, see if we can get certification pay incorporated into this budget for our fire department. And again, uh, that is the cost. Just want to thank y'all as council for taking the time and being a part of this. I know there's been a number of meetings. I, I have to reiterate, this has been a tough one for me, um, because of some of the situation we've had. But everybody has stepped it up here. It's, it's been a very good thing to be able to receive some funds to come in to be able to help us get things done within a budget that we weren't expecting. But it also comes off of, again, COVID. And so we're all reeling with that, we still work within what we can, uh, in dealing with COVID and our impact here to our community. But we're fortunate to get some funds to be able to help us to move forward. But I wish to extend my appreciation to city council for their contribution by attending the city council work session reviewing the budget. I want to express my appreciation to city staff for their input, hard work and striving to maintain the highest level of services to the citizens and the businesses in our community. Any questions, Mayor Council?
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, do we have any questions? Mr. Gregory?
I assume this is a bookkeeping thing, what happened to step? We went from bringing in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Zed. I assume it's somewhere else in the budget.
COVID. Chief, a, a large part of that's COVID, isn't it?
Yeah, enforcement piece. And again, we're, it's unfortunate that we can't count for traffic enforcement dollars that we would have been, uh, essentially stopping people for. But there was a time where we weren't, um, doing traffic enforcement, um, which is a decrease in revenue. And so it just, it's just the total, if you look at the revenue side of the, the, uh, the court, it's just all court income right now. But there's not, the step is not currently being done, correct, Chief?
Oh, it is. You want to flesh that out? This is not like it was in the past. You mean, we're not stopping as many, there are not that many to stop or what? Even with a twenty percent increase in overtime pay for, because of step?
Yeah, um, it, uh, I was notified by a chief, you know, that we have two officers who've been impacted, so they're essentially out of patrol right now. So, um, and, and again, we saw that from April till most of last year, um, that, that sort of the step or enforcement wasn't, uh, being conducted because, because of primarily COVID, as the chief said, because we weren't stopping, uh, people at the time. I think it'll ramp back up, but, um, I'm optimistic about court, we still conduct court, we do it by Zoom. So, uh, it's not what it used to be, but, um, I kind of have an idea with the chief and we're gonna probably move forward and I'll bring it to city council about the next steps with enforcement in the department. So something that might help out.
It's a seven and a half million dollar budget when I first got here, it was under five, but, uh, twenty one thousand dollars for janitorial services and that was an enormous jump. How in the world did that come about?
Well, originally, there was a part-time salary position for janitorial. We just moved to, uh, in lieu of a part-time person being paid, um, with benefits, we just moved to contractual janitorial service.
Good.
Part of that increase was a treasurer salary too, so.
That's true. I can take that to the bank. Twenty thousand dollar reduction in street maintenance. Is that simply to get the thing balanced?
Yeah, I think that was done, um, as far, where, where are you reading into as far as? Are you talking about the historical, the five-year? Because we, we will, I mean, we're optimistic to see increases of sales tax that would go for our street maintenance portion. But as far as projects, I mean, we reimbursed a large portion of the streets with the Banyan project that came in.
Item one fifty ninety fifty-three. One ninety fifty-two. Great maintenance, minor in infrastructure, decrease of twenty thousand dollars.
I'm not seeing that, sir, are you talking about the general fund?
Under street department expenditures.
Oh, street department. Sorry. Are you talking about the minor infrastructure line item, ninety fifty-two?
Yep.
Yeah, I think, um, and that's under Mr. Harada's and that's for minor street work that's conducted. Some of that's been on, on, on-demand contract work, I believe, Rick, um, and other small projects. I mean, last year I had, uh, seventy thousand built in. And so I've, I've just lowered it to fifty thousand because we feel like fifty thousand has kind of been on average of the five-year average for work in there, but that's, that's minor projects as far as base repairs that are being done. For instance, for example, you know, have a contractor coming in to do some base repairs before, um, Intermount comes in and does all the seventeen or eighteen streets. So some of those portions of dollars. In prior years, we fixed just sections of streets that were in pretty bad shape, like on South Winston, up here on Lemonwood, where we did a certain portion of the street that was falling apart just to save it, uh, money came out of there. But it, that's not out of the street maintenance fund, that's directly within the streets department itself. So that's what it's used for. I felt it was okay to move it from seventy to fifty.
Per pass council instructions, are we expected to break even in the passport office this year? I know twenty twenty was lost, but were we?
Actually, Councilman, I, I am very optimistic, uh, the number of passports that are being conducted, I, I think we will surpass this year. Even though we only started back in March, um, I, I would say we're, we're actually booked up this Saturday. But it's, I, I'm fairly optimistic that we're gonna surpass the revenue line item.
I know, I've got to come in for mine, so, well, that's good news, that's, that's really good news.
Well, it's funny, I, I, I told someone that I go to monthly city manager meetings and, you know, people ask, you have a passport office? And I say, yeah, it's not doing too well, you know? Because surrounding entities, I do not want them to pick up on this program because we have a niche that people are finding out more and more, not only residents, but people who don't want to wait downtown. So we were doing it by appointments and now, um, essentially between, uh, Ms. Davis and Ms. Ulmer, I would happen to say they're at least doing three to four perm, uh, three to four passports a day. That's just on average, so.
And we set money aside this year for the expected two million dollar fire truck we're gonna buy a decade or so down the road.
Well, we do have funds in future, it's, it's a back-end capital outlay. We do have money built in for future truck, let's see. We have future fire vehicle, future rescue truck and truck purchase, pumper truck. So those are built in at, um, uh, let's see, twenty ten and forty thousand for future fire trucks. And then, of course, we have the current platform truck debt payments and police payment, whatever you call it, uh, built in for the principal and interest payment already built in.
Basically fifty grand a year for the big truck. For the future big, fifty grand a year for the future large truck.
Yeah, I think we have. Yes, that's what we've had built in.
In public works, are we gonna have the full complement of four, what is it, four people in public works, workers?
Well, we're certainly trying, sir, and we're hoping that this raising the base pay is going to help recruit. You know, Mr. Harada has, um, uh, one gentleman who's on contract that comes in right now, who I think may be interested in staying on board at some point, but I think this, uh, raising of the ladder, what we call it for our street collectors is certainly going to help, um, in that department. I know this is something Mr. Harada wanted to, to do for years and raising the, the base pay for these guys. Um, and I think this has helped because again, we tried to, to mirror what Alamo Heights is doing in paying their base collector. So at least we're trying to stay competitive, uh, in that standpoint, so.
What is your salary reflect in the budget?
Well, I mean.
The current pay?
So mine is reflected accordingly. There is some additional dollars put in the administrative bud, budget in case we do some changes.
And finally, last but not least, are we even collecting certificate of occupancies anymore? Fun, I mean, yeah, because that's almost nothing in the budget now, it used to be a substantial amount.
Are you, for commercial or residential?
Both.
Both? I believe so.
I just, it was just, I didn't know whether, because it's down to almost nothing.
Yes, sir, we're still collecting on the business. We're still collecting on the business side of it and we've never collected on the residential side.
Really?
Correct. Since my time in two thousand and fourteen, looking back to two thousand and nine and nineteen ninety-five in the code, if I remember correctly, it's ninety-five. There's never been a fee schedule for residential CFO, there's no requirement for it. We don't own our own utilities, so the CFO would, uh, as on the commercial side of the house, would cover inspections. We don't have inspections on residential for a CFO type occupancy. Those are, those fees are covered, and I think I know where you're going with this, with additions and, is that what you mean, like additions and renovations? Those fees are collected, not on a CFO, they're collected on the permitting side of the house, which covers the inspection fee and also.
That answers the question, sir. Thank you. I have no more questions.
From myself or Mr. Zamaron?
Okay, Council, do we have any more questions for Mr. Rappley? Uh, Mr. May?
I have a motion.
We can take a motion, Mr. May.
Oh, you want me to make it right now?
Please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council approve ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero nine dash fourteen to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty two operating budget for the city of Castle Hills.
Give a motion by Mr. May, a second by Mr. Gregory, Mr. Paul, you have some more discussion?
Yes, uh, I'm a little confused. It would have helped if I had a list, late, too late right now. If I had a list to say specifically what the two ninety-seven you're pulling in, additional specifically where it goes. Now, let me elaborate. Sometime back, month ago, whenever, we approved the sixty thousand dollars, for example, for the, um, generator. So I have to assume that that sixty thousand dollars was already in the first budget of seven million, one hundred and nine thousand dollars. But here you're saying it's part of the funds that we're transferring over from the other, from the government fund that we're getting. But if it's already over here, it seems like we're counting or doing something different. And it's the same thing, uh, with a couple of items in here, so.
Okay.
Can you elaborate?
Uh, again, as I, in the general fund revenue here, you show the, the transfer there, it's right there, eighty thirty-two of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand. When the generator was approved for sixty thousand, ideally, we were looking at that coming out of the seed. That was before we knew these funds were gonna be available. It had these, the generator was never in as a part of the general fund itself.
Correct.
It was gonna come out of the seed, but as I mentioned in previous workshops, it was ideal to use these funds and save the seed money for. It was ideal to use these funds and save the seed money for other projects.
How how many of these items are reoccurring? Obviously, the pay is.
Well, the the pay, well, okay, so two things, the pay that we're reimbursing for the firefighter salary and benefits. That's not necessarily reoccurring because it's going back into the general fund. So is the revenue loss of the seventy.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, stop right there. I'm I'm slow. You said because it's going back in the general fund, but each year we're still responsible for what we approved tonight, correct?
Correct, for this year's budget.
So so it's a reoccurring. It goes into the salary aspect. It's reoccurring. It's not just a one time shot.
Mr. Rapp, I I think what Mr. Paul is getting at is we're going to continue paying salaries. But I think what you're trying to say is that we're not incurring any additional expenses. We're just recovering from previous salaries as a result of.
This year.
Yes, sir. This year, yes.
But what about next year and the next year?
Well, these are for this year. It's going back as a result of two thousand twenty one budget that we're able to recoup back into the general fund.
I understand. Where are you going to get the money for next year? Or the following year or the following year? That's what I'm asking.
Well, again, I think. Future colas are dependent on how the economics of, I mean, the budget itself, I mean, depending how revenues go. There may not be a cola next year. But now we're able to utilize these funds back into the general fund from for myself to be able to. Have a balanced budget of revenue and expenditures here. The other capital expenses out of that fund are just one time purchases right there on the. On the screen there with the city hall generator, the IT and the phase two renovations. Those are all one time expenses.
I understand. That's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of the two hundred and ninety seven.
So to answer your question, the only thing that would carry over. Salaries to next year as part of the FY twenty two is the colas, and if we were to do the certification pay for our firefighters.
Well, the cola and of course, we're increasing, which I accept to the sanitation, which is fine.
Yes, sir.
And is there a way? I mean, this this. Certification of going to school or whatever it is in the fire department, is there a way to just? If we have the money, like we have some cash sitting aside, can we pay a bonus for that for this year? And not putting it in as a salary ongoing salary situation? Because we don't know what next year brings, the following year brings.
And Mr. Schnall is shaking his head no. So I'm going to assume that's a no.
Okay. I forget, we're city, we're city government instead of a company.
Let me ask your question a different way and see if Mr. Rappley. What I was thinking you were asking. Were you asking that this, were you saying or suggesting the reimbursement for salary benefits? For fire first responders of sixty thousand that he hasn't been a revenue replacement? Is actual dollars going to the fire people?
No, that was not what I was asking. I was asking, I was trying to find a way to work the twenty four thousand dollars in. That the chief was looking for, but if we put it in there with all the other stuff and it continues to be a reoccurring, we're fortunate and we have some cash for projects. But obviously, if we did, which brings, I have one more item that I want to ask, if I may.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. That 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 helps me understand where you were going.
I'm glad you helped me understand. No, do I? Am I clear in what I was asking?
Now I.
Okay, okay.
And I will point out to the governing body, however, that if you approve this budget tonight. By record vote. You can't come back later when Mr. Rappley and Fire Chief have identified that source of that twenty four thousand dollars. And make an amendment to this budget.
Okay, but the bend into the budget was still mean it goes on. Forever as opposed to just making a one time figure. A one time payout. Right, I got you. I do have one other item, if I may. I believe it's pretty obvious to most of the people that I talk to, and I don't talk to everybody, but. We definitely have. A safety issue in our city through no fault of our own. The drive through problems, the traffics, the issues and the and the like. I believe. That for the matter of protection of the city, and I know the citizens have asked for additional force. I think we ought to have that additional officer. For the patrol that we specifically have talked about. Now, I also think. That our primary goal is to be on the side of caution with everything that's been going in our city. And incidentally, I have, I would have to assume that he would pay for himself. Now, we don't go out looking for revenue, but because of the nature of the business of that particular position. I would have to assume that he would pay for himself. And what I'd like to do is ask the chief to explain one more time. How he would use him and the thoughts that he has in relation to that particular position.
Mayor, Council. As we previously discussed in some of the other meetings. I know Councilman Gregory had asked about maybe utilizing another officer, you know, that we have now. The problem is, is you're taking away the current staff that we have now and. Reassigning him to a traffic position, so that's taken away from their primary goal of patrolling the residential areas, the business areas. For example, today we had a fatality here on the highway. And all the officers were tied up on that, including myself. We were out on the highway on that. We had a fatality about two or three weeks ago. All the officers are utilized on that. If we can manage to have. A dedicated traffic officer. That that's all they do is concentrate on is just enforcing, going out and enforcing, trying to get compliance. Of, you know, speeders. Stop signs violations. That's their, that's going to be their primary goal is just concentrating on on traffic violations. Granted, if if another officer is requesting help, obviously, they're going to break off and. Respond and help that officer or whatever the case may be. In contrast to, again, taking our current officers we have now. And and assigning that officer to work traffic, but it's just diminishing the the patrol officers that we have. On the street. Mr. Gregory brought up as far as step. We did suspend last year. Chief Siemens had suspended the step at the very break of the COVID. Pandemic. Again, to try to limit the exposure to the officers. I mean, we already had the officers that were going out and making contact with public. The under, under other circumstances. So we're just trying to limit that exposure. Earlier this year, we reinstated it. But again, some of the the officers are are going out there and handling what, you know, what they're supposed to do. But it's it's and and there's officers that are working step. It's just not. That's a voluntary deal. It's not like the traffic enforcement officer where they're on duty and we can tell that officer today you're going to work traffic and you're. That that's your your responsibility, responsibility today. As a step officer, you're you're just going to, that's voluntary. You're just coming in and working overtime. I don't know if that answers some of the questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the motion by Mr. May to add. To include enforcement officer as outlined by the chief in the current budget.
Thank you for your most your amendment. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second, Mr. Joyce, discussion.
I guess it's an exceptionally bad idea. We're not fully up to par anyway. And to think you add one more person. To catch all the speeding increases going on all over the city is. I I don't understand the logic behind it. It seems to me you'd have to increase it by at least ten or fifteen or twenty people to do what? Five or six or seven. I don't know how many people complained. I think I've heard numbers of three people have complained or seven people have complained. And we came up with this idea to hire this new person. I I think it's just it's it's absurdly ridiculous. That the the police that are already on patrol can catch people if they want to right there. And so you already have people patrolling everything. If we're just going to patrol Gladiola because three or four or five people have complained on Gladiola. Then let's be clear about it. I don't expect to see more people on my street, and I don't expect to see this person on Lock Hill, Selma. If they're doing all the problem over near the high school. So. One person isn't going to even remotely do the trick. And it is just to me just throwing good money after bad. We have other places that you can put this money. And and get the the result. I don't think it's going to make much of an impact at all.
Sir, I would disagree with you there. The just the one officer would make a an impact of our our concentration is giving more on military. Which you can see people are flying. I mean, they're. Short of becoming airborne as fast as they're going. The the problem is, is like you said, and I agree, the officers are out there, the the current staff that we have now, they're out there and trying to enforce. You know, as much traffic as it can, but calls take precedence over traffic. If you call nine one one or whatever the case is, they're going to stop what they're doing to respond to the call. Traffic is coming in secondary. In this case, if we had a traffic enforcement officer, that officer would be dedicated strictly to. To traffic.
To what? Traffic, we're just just military?
No, sir. We're, I'm talking about, I I use military as a as a reference. That's the biggest. Problem hot roadway. There's speeders on Lock Hill, there's speeders on JK, there's speeders on on West Avenue. They would be circulating, but the one officer, just the mere presence of of working traffic on military is going to start getting people to slow down again. Because that's they're going to see that now there's be an enforcement again. There's and we're going to try to get compliance.
Well, a lot of this started several years ago with the. School buses. Racing up and down Gladiola at various different times. And of course, I I hope you all have addressed that by causing the buses to reroute. But. If we're getting one person primarily dedicated to one street. North military. Then that leaves the whole rest of the city. People can do it or cut through. All over the place as they're doing now. It I just don't see that that the benefits the city as a whole. It's just hopefully we we get enough people we can catch on military highway to break even.
And Mr. You're misunderstanding. You're twisting this. I'm not, when I say that we're going to concentrate on one street, I'm not saying that's the only street that we're going to hit. They're going to circulate, you know, around. We don't want them to just flood military because then people say, oh, you know what, I'm going to take West Avenue instead and and haul butt through there. They're going to move around. They'll they'll work a little bit here, jump around here. They just they just relocate. And I I think part of the misunderstanding is that one officer is going to fix all the problems. I don't think anybody's suggesting that. All our problems are going to be fixed, but this is a step in the right direction. We have two to three officers being patrolling per night. That doesn't mean they're going to solve all the crime, but we still want those officers out there patrolling because if we didn't have officers patrolling. We would be more prone to crime.
Saying is basically this, we need one, but we may need two, why not three, why not four, why not five? I mean, there is no limitation for this using the logic you're using. Because if you're saying, well, we only have one person and he's concentrating on military highway, even though there's a lot going on on Gladiola. Jack Jones Mossburg, Lock Hill, Selma, through the neighborhoods, then the logic is we got to hire at least one or two or three or four more.
Because we start with one and and see where.
It may come to that point.
Mr. Isbrand, you've been waiting patiently.
Actually, Mayor, I have a procedural question. So we had a motion on the floor when we were discussing it. Some of us have not yet had a chance to ask our questions. We now have amendments being made before that has taken place.
Yes, sir.
So what is the protocol here? Do we? Act on this amendment and then we pick up that discussion? Or have I now been, or or do we continue that discussion, then act on the amendment, then I act on the original? Can you tell me how the process would work, Mr. Schnall?
As of right now.
Or doesn't now? And I'm sure you do.
And we'll see what happens. Mr. Schnall will be quick to correct me, but I believe as of right now, discussion is over for everything. When it comes to vote, we vote on the amendment first and then we vote on the original.
So we would, we would complete discussion before we would act on any amendments or the original motion.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, well, Mr. Paul's withdrawn his motion. Mr. Joyce?
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you so much. Let's get back to discussion on the original one, chief. We might come back to you. For that. Once we get back to the origin, the amendment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Isbrand, I'll go first and then Mr. May will be in short session.
So Mr. Rappley, first of all, thank you, Mr. Paul, for doing that. Because I think part of this may be, you know, are we just going to pile on or we're going to do some give or take here? And I think that discussion is important to have when we look at these numbers and the limited finances that we have. So, Mr. Rappley, I just had a couple of questions that would help inform me then in terms of some of this. And would you just refresh my memory? What is this year's budget? It's six point nine.
Six million, nine eleven, nine forty nine.
Okay, six point nine million. The motion we have is to approve a seven point four million dollar budget. That's, you know, half a million dollars more we're adding to this budget if we approve it as is right now.
Roughly the. The slide I had there roughly. My math, three fifty seven, I believe. That's the total.
Well, three fifty seven is in addition to the seven point one, which is what we were talking about last week. So now it was, we're at six point nine, our current operating budget, six point nine. The proposed budget as of last week was seven point one. Now we're up to seven point four.
Yes, sir. Roughly from last year's budget to the myself, the city manager proposed budget. Was about eighty thousand, and now we've increased that by about another three fifty, so. You're about four fifty.
I just think it's important for us to understand. That the decisions that we're making here have significant financial impact. A half million dollars. We're adding into this year's budget. Without having the discussion of do we need everything that is now in this? Or what is the proper thing to do, given the financial uncertainties that we have? And I think it's it that. That is worthy of discussion. But I think it is is at least worthy of raising here as we race to pass this budget. Is that we're agreeing tonight, we want to add in another half million dollars. And the presentation that I've heard tonight suggests to me the things that maybe we're talked about being in the budget that aren't going to be in the budget are still going to come back. At a later date to add more into that. So again, how much ultimately are we talking about? Are we now going from seven point four to seven point five? How much more can we bear? And I just urge us to think about that a little bit because we're going to have to pay all these reoccurring obligations time and time again going forward. My next question, Mr. Rappley, is you said there were no new positions added to the budget this year. Is that correct?
No new person. No new person added, sorry.
Okay, so so let me ask you about that then. When we approved moving Jeanette to Public Works, we approved doing that through the end of this calendar year. So does that mean that that position goes away or that that position is now considered a no new addition?
No, it's, I I think I mentioned that at the delivery of the budget. It's already programmed into the Public Works budget.
So it's important for us to understand that we actually are adding another full time position here. I'm not debating the merits of whether we need it. You all can decide for yourself, but I think it's important for us to understand the implications. I'm not debating the merits of whether we need it. You all can decide for yourself, but I think it's important for us to understand the implications of this stuff.
And I think when I say no new personnel, it's because. For instance, a request like for the traffic enforcement officer that's not been added nor added in any of the departments. Based on the request when we're developing this budget itself.
Right. And what we've heard tonight is that we're either going to add that position through an amendment. Or if we don't, that it will come back to us another way, which questions whether, to me, whether the will of the council is being heard here. My last question is, in our last meeting, um, we talked at length about TMRS. I haven't heard a word tonight about TMRS. Um, is that off the table from your point of view?
Uh, I think so at this point. I mean, based on the dollars for the change, based on those percentage changes. Um, I don't think it's something that we can, um. Uh, program into the budget this year. I mean, we were talking about an extra two hundred and thirty thousand on top of there. You know, I try to stay conservative, again, utilize the funds that have come in, especially for those capital purchases, those one-time purchases. You know, again, try to get the cola for the employees. Um, and then the only things that were left out from the original request in the budget was a traffic enforcement officer and certification pay for our firefighters.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, my only thought be, before I yield the floor here, if you will. Is, you know, I, I appreciate your intention, Mr. Paul, but I know there's a forty-seven thousand dollar price tag to that. Plus all the benefits, plus all the reoccurring stuff that's going to come along with it. I have an appetite actually to see that position, um, filled. But I also have an appetite to see us like get our, get, get under control here. And I, I'm not really comfortable saying I want to vote. For a budget that has an extra half million bucks in it at a time when we've gone through all this uncertainty that we've gone through. So I guess my question, I say it rhetorically, not looking for an answer unless anyone wants to offer it. Is before we race to pile into this, can we not have some discussion of perhaps things that aren't essential this year? That would help to, um, control the, the growth of this budget and not just keep, uh, making it bigger and bigger. But are there things that aren't essential this year or aren't deemed as necessary this year? That perhaps could be considered taken out of this so that if it's the will of the council to include the traffic enforcement officer. We could accommodate for that adjustment at forty-seven thousand dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
I strongly support this budget as it's been presented as well as the proposal of Councilman Paul. And I hope we hear it again. Uh, and I'll tell you the reasons. Number one, we just heard the accountant, the two thousand nineteen over two thousand twenty comparisons. We had an increase of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That probably would not have been predicted during a pandemic period. Secondly, we have year-over-year monthly sales revenue stats that are coming in. And they compare favorably between two thousand and twenty and the first few months of two thousand twenty-one. Every model projects as COVID diminishes, the economy will continue to expand. That's number three. Number four, the San Antonio metro area has one of the hottest housing markets in the country. Our Ad Valerum tax base, which is huge, is one, it's prop- it is the biggest chunk. There's no reason to believe that's going to change. And fifth, we will be a target, uh, we will be on target for increased revenues. And this is a balanced budget. It will be a balanced budget. There's no question about it. And we should not ever look at being so conservative. That we are literally running into surpluses. This is the people's money. And I think the people's money should be spent to do the people's work. And I think that it, we've done a marvelous job during this whole process. That's what the whole budget process is about. And we've given our opinions to Mr. Rapley. He's given them back to us. And yes, we have already made cuts. We have put things off the table to be delayed down the line. I think this is a well-reasoned increase. And I'm specifically interested in not falling behind and not repeating some of the bad lessons of our, uh, local history. Which is we got behind the eight ball on delayed infrastructure and as a consequence, we cost ourselves a lot of money. If we would have been more proactive ten, twenty years ago, we wouldn't have the, the obligations. We seize that opportunity and I want to compliment each and every one of us up here. Because we locked in a, an incredible inter- low interest rate and now we're bearing the fruits of that. By getting more and more streets done earlier than we would have otherwise at cheaper rates. We have to be bold and we have to be visionary and we cannot be afraid of doing the right thing at the right time. And it's my opinion that it is the right time to approve this budget that has been submitted. And Mr. Paul, I would like to hear the amendment again.
Before we get there, counsel, um, I, I do want to recognize Mr. Isbrand's. Point of view. I, I think it's important to keep an eye on the whole picture. You know, Mr. Rapley presented the ARPA, um, funds and. I think it's also important to realize that of that a hundred and sixty thousand dollars are. And I'll say this in air quotes, a one-time expenditure. Obviously there might be some operations and maintenance that goes along with that, but. By and large, the initial investments, um, something that we're getting from the government. And I think that we should make sure that we're doing everything we can to balance the needs of the community with the gov- with the generator and the IT improvements. And using that money, uh, as good stewards of the city. I, I will say personally that I do support the police officer, having been on, uh. My share of ride-alongs, I, I understand what happens out there. And in some of the instances they get into, they need the support and. I also know that talking to business owners, traffic's an issue. I've had the owner of Clementine tell me that they're concerned because on some nights it sounds like Northwest Military is Southwest Military. And that's not great for Clementine's business outdoors. You know, we have Soho coming in, which is going to be a huge economic generator. They also just invested many thousands of dollars in an outdoor patio. There's a lot of restaurants that are going outdoors because that's. A little bit more secure in the world that we're living in right now with the pandemic. And I think it's our responsibility as stewards of the city to ensure that we're helping them with that investment. I think that if we can slow down the community, uh, it provides a, uh, safer Castle Hills. It provides a better outdoor business environment for businesses I think that we need to support because they're doing a good job of supporting us. And I ultimately, at the end of the day, I think Mr. Paul's right. While we can't concern ourselves with the financial aspect of it. I have a hard time believing that that position would have paid for itself down the road. Mr. Paul?
I share Mr. Isbrand's concern, no question about it, but of the three hundred and something thousand dollars. I think it's about two hundred and something thousand dollars. It's been mentioned is a one-time shot. The only reoccurring expenses that we're talking about tonight. If I'm reading this right and if I remember correctly, is the sanitation pay increases, which I think we all accept is needed. And, uh, of course, whatever cola that we may have. Those are the only reoccurring. The rest of this additional, the, the three hundred of the three hundred thousand dollars is coming from. Well, again, they're projects, they're one-time shots. And. So if we're doing that. If we're taking the, and using. The money, as you said, for the sixty thousand dollars, uh, that we set aside for the generator. Which was coming out of the seed money, then the seed fund has still that sixty thousand dollars sitting in it. So these are all, one of my concerns over the years, and I've asked previous counsel when I wasn't on council is. We're wasting money by not using that seed money for projects. And, and because there's plenty to get done around here and we've been slowly eating away at it. If my memory serves me right. It was, we got it somewhere around two thousand seven, two thousand eight. And it was, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars roughly. And we still have three hundred and something thousand dollars.
And yes, sir. And, and Mr. Paul, the, the partial, part of that is timing is because the city hall generator and she's been working on that. We will not have to, it will not be delivered or paid for till after January first.
Arguing that, I understand.
What's built in right now is to pay for, um. Again, I, I bringing back to, to construct the offices back here and the generator for the fire department.
Right. And that'd be, uh, through the funds and their one-time projects.
Yes.
So the only reoccurring, as I said, we've, I've mentioned the two that are reoccurring, plus the officer, but, uh. Number one, I, I just strongly feel there's a need because I see the speeding and I see the recklessness going on all the time. And then number two, incidentally, uh, I think it'll more than pay for itself. And, uh. Then we can, uh, discuss with Mr. Gregory about the second one, the third one, the fourth one. Chief, uh, how many officers are we down? Who? Cheatham? Yeah. Okay.
Um, so, um, like I said, we've got two that are.
How many officers do you have?
Uh, twenty. Twenty-one?
What did I hear a while ago? The number eighteen, what was that for? That I heard eighteen.
I'm not sure.
Maybe it's on the street or you got twenty-one that's on the street?
No. I'm not sure what that number is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Um, the, I mean, if I may, just a- as well, uh, the, the plus to this is, you know, like I said, just the, the cost of the, the salary for this one employee. Uh, we, we've got a unit that we dedicate, uh, that would obviously come out of crime control. Is it on? Okay, uh. One of our, the Step Tahoe now is, is up for replacement. So our plan was if, if, you know, if this had come to, to light is. Uh, transfer the current Step Tahoe and assign that to the traffic unit officer. And then the, the new, uh, unit would be assigned a step. So there wouldn't be any cost to get a unit per se. Just the, the equipment for obviously the, the new, uh, the new patrol unit. Crime control. And, and the other thing is if, if this doesn't work, if it's doesn't, if it doesn't show that it's working, there's nothing says it, you know, next year. You know, shut it down, you know?
Well, to me, the safety is the issue. To me, that's the primary concern and we are having concerns and, and, and. You know, fourteen, three hundred thousand people a day go by there. How many times do we see on Nextdoor or the different places where, uh, Wa- uh, Officer Wagner is kind enough to tell us? Uh, of the various things. Well, how many are we missing because we don't have the manpower? And it's not just missing it. It's, it's. Well, we had a serious, serious accident today. And we can, I'm surprised we haven't had more serious accidents on the rest of the streets around the city because I seen some real. Well, people aren't thinking very well.
Yes, sir.
Chief, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Would you be amenable to doing this with a sunset provision?
I, I think that there would, that'd be something to, to entertain for sure. I mean, I, I wouldn't want to. If it doesn't work, it, it, it doesn't, it's not going to work. We will recognize that. Um, I don't want to keep something that's just consuming. You know, funds or whatever.
Yes, but that's terribly vague. A sunset provision can be determined whether it's making, paying its way or not. Somehow you've meshed this in with the STEP program. The philosophy of STEP is going to be this. I think that's what you were saying. I was having a hard time understanding what you were saying. But I agree with the mayor. If you have a sunset provision at the end of that one year, if you cannot show. This officer is paying at least what we're paying to keep you. Then the position closes.
Yes, sir. That's what I basically said.
But just we think he works or he, he may be doing a good job. He didn't. He didn't want to cut it. You, you're going to have to be able to show that what he's done. Balanced out against what we pay. Evens out at the very least. And I hope it, if it, if it passes with this sunset provision, I hope it works out extraordinarily well.
I think the key would be the safety items within a year or two, how well it performs the job that we would expect them to do. And if we, that's to me, that's the prime issue. That's the prime concern.
Frank, how do you determine that metric?
Mr. Paul, I, I completely agree with you, Mr. Gregory. I, I don't think that we can get into the financial aspect, but I think it's very easy. For a chief's own to go to delineate how many violations or maybe is. How many violations were observed by that officer, that traffic officer? Is that feasible, chief?
Absolutely. I mean, just, I mean. Yes.
I didn't, I didn't even want to say. I didn't want to say citations. And I think even, you know, more specifically, I don't want to talk about citations, but how many violations they addressed.
Right. And you can get a breakdown of exactly what each violation would be.
Sure. There will be a metric. If we have this sunset provision.
As there is now. I mean, we, we, you getting, um. Monthly numbers on, on other stats, we can do the same thing with, uh, traffic, traffic enforcement.
Well, I could live with a one-year sunset provision.
Okay.
Well, again, I think we could establish performance metrics in there. We want to get away from certain language here, but I think there's a way to, um. Monitor the performance of the enforcement officer, uh, from year to year. I'm sure that chief can develop those metrics and, and go and see if a comparison to see if it's, uh, essentially, as you said, paying for itself down the road. Not that, again, if it's a sunset provision, we review it and if it's not working, then we take it out of the budget for the following year.
And again, I just want to go back to that. My, my goal is observing violations or stopping violations. I'm not concerned with citations. And I think we're on the same page, chief.
That is correct.
Awesome. Um, is, do we have any more discussion on the?
Mr. Paul?
Do we have any more discussion?
Amenable to?
Agenda as a whole?
One month while they develop, develop these metrics and they can come back and amend the budget next month. Because what we're doing, we're approving something without the metrics. And I'm just saying, fine, come up with the metrics, bring it back as a budget amendment next month.
But that's already in play now with the current staff that we have. We can still pull the same stats that you're looking for, the numbers. Uh, for whatever the violations are. That's in play. I would just. There's, there's nothing different.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Mr. Isbrand?
So, but chief, to do an apples-to-apples comparison, you really can't look at what other officers you're doing now or even this past year because COVID has impacted that. Don't you really need a year to establish the initial data and then the second year to see whether the performance consistently lives up to that?
Yes, sir. That would be fair.
Yeah.
And. And, and Mr. Isbrand, I think you've very succinctly, uh, hit the nail on the head that. We have subject matter experts. These are department heads for a reason, and I think that we need to trust them to do their job. Do we have any more discussion on the? Budget as a whole before we get into a potential amendment? Mr. Joyce?
Just a couple of quick comments, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I believe in fiscal responsibility and certainly we have to be concerned with the five hundred thousand dollar difference between last year and what's proposed now. But I think we also have to keep in mind that, um. Ad Valerum taxes this year are to the benefit of a hundred and ten thousand bucks or so. And with all of that help from the feds, that makes me a little bit more comfortable about that difference. The only other thing I wanted to say was I, I think it's incumbent on us. As the leaders of the city to find more money. You know, one of the things we're looking at, and then I will go into the, the comprehensive plan, but economic development is something that we're going to look at very hard. And I think that's something that we all need to take very seriously and work hard on and even invest in. At the appropriate time. So. I think that's a part of our job that maybe hasn't been talked about too much. And perhaps we should keep that on the, on the plate as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Real quick, I just wanted to answer Mr. Paul's question from earlier. That in the current budget, when you talk about the adjusted pay scale for our public works collectors and colas. Those are the only ones that essentially, as Mr. Paul said, would carry forward, uh, to the next year. Um, anything else is one time. So I hope that answers it, Mr. Paul. I'm just confirming what you said. That's all. Sorry.
Okay. I'm not saying anybody has to make a motion, but if somebody were to make a motion, that would be the appropriate time.
I'd like to put an amendment to the original motion and that we, uh, add the traffic enforcement officer and that, uh, is it, would it be proper, uh, if we put a two-year sunset on it? In my motion? Mr. Schnell, who is it? You got it.
So I think it, it just needs to be
Your.
Into the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. As that you have a brief discussion on the record right now with about where that money is going to come from.
Thank you.
And to answer that question, it would probably have to come from the fund balance to take care of that, a one-time transfer, um, as we've done last year, um, out of the fund balance to take care of this particular expenditure.
That would be for one year, so that would really be the start, and then we would see if in fact, uh, the position, uh, takes care of itself.
Mr. Schnell, do we have to tell where the money comes from too?
I think
Got you. Okay.
I think I said that, thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, and do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of the emotion as presented by Mr. Paul? Unanimous, thank you, counsel, now we're going back to the original motion. Made by Mr. May, I think it was seconded by Mr. Gregory.
Mary, real quick, if, if, and again, I, if it doesn't happen tonight, I really think whether it's, uh, a future council, meaning that at some point, we really got to look at the certification pay for our firefighters and make sure that's incorporated at some point.
Thank you.
I think it's something that's needed to be done, um, that'll help our departments, help be competitive. Um, and, um, like I said, i- it's essential, I believe, to our fire department and to our employees over there.
Completely agree, Mr. Rapley, and we'll proceed with the roll call vote. Mr. Isbrand?
Aye.
Mr. Paul? Mr. May?
Aye.
Mr. Joyce?
Aye.
Mr. Gregory? Okay, the motion is passing unanimously, thank you, counsel. And next we will proceed to item six point eight, discussion of possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash oh nine dash one four dash A to adopt the twenty twenty-one tax rate for the City of Castle Hills by a record vote, Mr. Rapley?
Mayor, counsel, this is to adopt the tax rate, um, as indicated on the ordinance, um, sorry, I don't have mine. For the ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-one nine fourteen A, and you should have a copy that was placed at the dais in front of you, which has a revised, uh, copy there that shows the, um, overall tax rate of the point five two four eight nine on each one hundred valuation. And then, of course, the portion that's the M and O is the point four nine six five three five, and then the debt service fund of point zero two eight three six four. Obviously, we had a budget hearing, I mean, excuse me, a tax rate hearing last week. And, um, and as Mr. Schnall would say, uh, there is verbatim on the motion to approve this uh, that needs to be said to, uh, adopt this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley, I see Mr. May chomping at the bit over here. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point five two four eight nine nine, which is effectively a one point five eight percent increase in the tax rate and adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine dash fourteen dash A.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do, we have a second by Mr. Paul?
We have to have a record vote, so.
Well, we're with, no, 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 I, okay, um, Mr. Isbrand?
Aye.
Mr. Paul? Mr. May?
Aye.
Mr. Joyce?
Aye.
Mr. Gregory? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Uh, we'll proceed on item six point nine, discussion of possible action on a motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor, this is obviously the, to ratify the tax increase reflected in the now adopted twenty twenty-two budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Is that in the, the packet?
Under the, the budget will raise more revenue for property taxes than last year's budget by the amount of a hundred and ten thousand nine two five or three point seven two increase from last year's budget, the property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax rule this year, five thousand six twenty-one.
Do we have a motion, councilman?